All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. We are having a town hall meeting and we're really, really glad you're here. We have several people here in person. They're also streaming live on Facebook Live, so hello to everybody out there on Facebook Live. We'll be taking questions off Facebook Live as well as questions in the audience. First, I'm going to make sure we introduce everybody who's up here. It's your city council and your city manager, so just say your name real quick.
Hello, I'm Blake Margolis.
Matt Gubisich.
Brian Fundabert.
You all know all these people.
Martha Brown.
Pamela Bale.
And Brownie Searle.
And I'm Tammy Dana-Bashian, your mayor, and we are so glad to be having this event. I know it's a busy time of the year, it's December, but there's a lot going on in the city and we thought it was a good time to pause and have a town hall meeting so we could make sure we're answering questions. This is an open mic. That means anything and everything goes. It is the season to be jolly, so if you have a, you know, a tough question, just ask it in a jolly manner, you know? But anyway, it is an open mic. We will have, you can come up to the podium and ask a question, or we can bring a microphone to you. I'll be answering questions. Brian, city manager, will be answering questions. We'll be taking questions from the audience, we'll be taking questions on Facebook Live. There's really no rules unless things get, you know, crazy. We're not going to put a three-minute time limit, but it is a Q&amp;A session. If you want to come up here and make some suggestions or state your opinion, that's great, but it is, you know, mainly an open-mic Q&amp;A session. We want to be able to answer your questions. We have lots of people in the back room and I'm going to let Brian talk about that.
Thank you, Tammy. I do want to let everybody know that if you get a chance, maybe after the meeting, we have a lot of tables in the back with staff. We have our Public Works crews, we have utility billing, we have our library, Parks and Recreation, Police, Fire. If you have any burning questions, maybe things that don't get answered tonight, or maybe you just don't want to ask, but you want to just kind of, you know, ask later or just ask somebody, utility billing can look up your account. They can help you get signed up for AMI tonight. Going to talk a little bit about that, I'm sure. We've got staff at the library, they want to sign you up for HOOPLA. And if you don't have a library card, they're going to sign you up for that, too. So we have a lot of folks in the back. We also have, next to our Public Works Department, we have some folks from the Community Investment Advisory Board here tonight, and they're here to help maybe answer any questions about the upcoming bond election. So if you have anything specific you'd like to hear from them, they're here as well. So thank you, guys, for all being here.
Thank you, Brian. And if you are watching this on Facebook Live and you want to come on down, because now you know there's a lot of departments down here that can answer questions also, come on down. This is scheduled from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We don't know if we'll run that long, but there's plenty of time to come on down if you'd like to come on down. So anything else you want to talk about before we get started? Okay, let's get started. Anybody want to be first? Is someone managing the mic?
Managing the mic.
Is anybody managing the mic? Or we just haven't come up to the podium?
And Lisa.
We're going to ask Lisa to do that. That way, if you want to just do it from your chair, that's fine, too, and Lisa will get you the mic.
So Lisa, our Neighborhood Services Coordinator, did I say your title roughly correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Raise your hand if you want to ask a question. Mr. Wright? And if you could, just say your name. You don't have to give us your address, but if you could just tell us your name.
Bill Wright. Two questions. One, the blue and white signs that are all over town, that some have something on them and some don't have something on them. Could somebody explain what they are, how they got there, what the purpose is, how that's going? And second question is, the medians that are all being torn up, what's going in them?
Thank you, Bill. We really appreciate that. So do you want to take one? Number one first, and then I'll let Martha take number two?
Okay.
That sounds good. All right, so the first question was about the blue and white signs that you see across the city of Rowlett. The city of Rowlett has a sign ordinance, and so if you are a builder and you want to put all those signs that says, hey, you know, our housing's just down the street, you know, come look at, you know, Landmark Homes, or, you know, whatever it is, we wanted to try to change that dynamic. And so what we did is that there's a few other cities that we know that does this. Saxon is one of those where we contracted with a company to provide the signage so that these builders and developers can put their signs there rather than having all of those signs along in the medians, because they're illegal signs and we pull them up, then somebody puts them back out, and we pull them up and put them back out. So where we're at right now is that initially, the city also has the right to put a couple of those signs on there, too. The goal is that these will become permanent. What we've done initially is tested some locations. Some of those probably won't make the cut, but eventually you're going to see those in a more permanent location, probably pretty close to where the entrances are to the city as well as along some of our major corridors. So this is an intentional deal. They'll look much nicer once they're permanently installed. The builders themselves. Now, the city of Rowlett, like we said, we get a couple of the slats ourselves so we can promote the library and different things, but for the most part, the builders and developers are the ones who pay the rent for that. So there's no cost to the city. Say again? Well, the builder and the developers, they have to pay for the rent, yes.
All right, so what's going on with the medians and why are they so torn up? Keep Rowlett Beautiful applied for a Governor's Community Achievement Award, and this is something that we do through Keep Texas Beautiful. And that's a $250,000 award that we compete for with cities of our size throughout the state. We won that award, and it's a beautification award for state highways, of which 66, or our Lakeview Parkway, is a state highway. And so it's a landscaping award. When we started working with TextDOT to design that landscape feature for 66, they offered us the opportunity to tap into some green ribbon project funds, which was another $2.1 million for our city that TextDOT is funding. And they asked us to think big and to design landscaping for the entire stretch of Highway 66. And so that gave us an opportunity to do something really beautiful and that was coordinated from one end of the city to the other. And it also gave us the opportunity to get rid of some of the grassy areas that we have to pay contractors to mow. It gave us the opportunity to get rid of some of the concrete, that's an impervious surface, that when we get a lot of rain, it can cause flooding on the streets. And so it also gave us the opportunity to pull out some of the old landscaping, which most landscaping has about a 20-year lifespan, and some of it was really getting to the end of its life, and especially the stuff that went through the drought. You may have noticed that some of it had died off. And so not only are we getting new landscaping, but we're getting some state-of-the-art irrigation systems that are going into those medians. They're tearing out a lot of the concrete. And so we're getting some irrigation systems that have sensors in there that will only water when the moisture content hits a certain level, and that can be monitored offline, or, I'm sorry, it can be monitored through a computer system. And so that way, we don't have to have water trucks go through there. It's going to be a great system, it's going to be beautiful. I know it caused a lot of traffic backup in the beginning. I think that they've gotten it down a little bit as far as their scheduling goes, but bear with us, it's going to be beautiful for our city. I believe that the schedule is for them to complete the planting by, is it next October, Angie? And so, anyway, just hang in there with us. It's beautiful, it's being funded by TextDOT, and we're very proud to have it. It's something that our whole city can be proud of. When we apply for these grants, it showcases all of the volunteer efforts that our city does. And so they thought that we were worthy to be granted that, and we think so, too. So thank you for your patience.
And I wanted Martha to answer that because she was such an instrumental role in then getting that initial grant and then working with the state of Texas on the additional funding. And just to emphasize one more time, this is a grant. This is not taxpayer dollars. There will be no taxpayer dollars of the citizens of Rowlett allocated to this project. Of course, these are state funds, so they come from somewhere, but, you know, what would have happened if Rowlett had not agreed to accept that grant? It would have gone to a different community. So we're very, very happy, we're very fortunate that we have that. It's going to be a beautiful median for Highway 66, so we're very, very happy to have that. And I also wanted to mention that Debbie Bobbitt, our deputy mayor pro tem, is here now, too, so we have our entire city council. Is there any follow-up questions to those two questions before we move on? Is it a follow-up question?
No.
Okay. You want to ask? Any follow-up question to those two? Okay, go ahead, sir.
My name is Robert Johnson, I'm an educator. I drive down Main Street over here going over to Rowlett High School, and I notice in the mornings around about 6 o'clock, I see a lot of kids with dark clothes on. And I think I've asked a while back, it's been about two or three, four years ago, I asked that, were we going to put sidewalks on that open field, even in front of the chambers office? Were we going to put some type of sidewalks for the kids to stay on there because it's really dark and going down that road? And to this day, I haven't seen anything that's been built there. And you see in the beautification, we won an award because some of that money moved to put in sidewalks there for the kiddos that's going over to Rowlett and coming back every day, you know, coming into downtown. I think that's really an issue.
Okay. Did you say your name was Robert? Did I hear that?
Robert Johnson.
Thank you for your question, Robert. So I'll answer the last part first. No, those funds cannot be reallocated. They have to be on a state highway, and Main Street is not a state highway, and 66 is a state highway. And those grant funds are very specific in regards to the types of uses for those funds. They have to be, you know, beautification projects, not concrete and sidewalks. So that's just a little piece of your question. The bigger question is, what are we going to do and the safety issue with those students walking on those roads? So I don't know if you've noticed, but there was some recent work done by Public Works to put some gravel out on the south side of that road to make sure that those students had a flat surface and a dry surface to walk on. That was a temporary measure, and we've done that in the past, and we, you know, did it again, refurbished it, if you will, again recently. But the plan is, is to widen Main Street. So if you look at Main Street west of the roundabout, we're going to be extending that same type of design east of the roundabout. And Sean, can you hear me? You want to talk about timing real quick? If I talk about timing, I may say something you don't want me to say. We're going to start that in the spring. So we will be extending that same concept, you know, east of the roundabout all the way to PGBT, and we'll be starting that construction in the spring, and then we'll have a permanent solution for that. Okay? Thank you for your question. Anything you want to add, Brian? Okay. Next question? There's someone in the back, Lisa.
A question concerning the DART parking lot. Can you update us on some of the changes we're getting ready to see concerning the parking situation and also just concerning DART in general? Thank you.
Absolutely, Rob. Thank you for asking that question. So we're going to see some changes coming up here, and we're pretty excited about them. And I guess we're announcing them tonight. So, no. We've talked a little bit about this, and we'll talk about it more as we make decisions, but the DART parking lot, they've done the analysis, DART has done the analysis, and it's consistently 90% to 95% full. So that's a problem. When you have a DART parking lot that full, on a normal course of business, when you have any kind of event downtown or a state fair, you know, you're way over capacity. So we opened up discussions with DART probably about six to nine months ago now, and we've got some traction now. And that traction, well, let me back up for a minute. So we've done some surveys to determine what percentage of the people parking in the DART parking lot are Rowlett residents, and what percentage of the people parking in the DART parking lot are from member cities, DART member cities. And the analysis has come back that about 65% of the people parking in the Rowlett DART parking lot are from DART member cities. So what that means is 35% of the people parking in the DART parking lot are coming from cities that are not DART member cities and, you know, utilizing the DART resources. And, you know, we pay a lot of money in the city of Rowlett for the privilege of having DART here, as do other member cities. You know, prior to Rowlett being end-of-line, Garland was end-of-line. Garland had the same issues we're having now as far as, you know, full parking lot and people that are coming in and using DART that are not member-city residents. There's been the same thing that's happened on the north side with Plano. Plano had the same issue. So the good thing is, is we've got the benefit of Plano already going through this and DART trying to find some solutions to it and getting some best practices in place. And the best practice right now is priority parking for residents that are in DART member cities. And priority parking means the parking closest to the DART rail. So we're in the process of figuring out exactly what the priority parking will be, where that cutoff is, and we'll be going through a process of asking individuals that use the DART to have a permit in their car that will allow them to park in the closer-end parking spots, the priority parking spots. And then those people that are using the DART train that are not from DART member cities will still be able to park there, but they will not have the priority parking spots of the closer-end spots. So that's one thing we're working on. Another thing we're working on is just, you know, having discussions with DART, we need more parking. There is some land that DART owns that's close to there, and they're looking at their options right now, but we need to expand the parking in that DART parking lot also. And that's, you know, a decision that DART has to make, and we're in active discussions with DART about that. And then, you didn't ask, Rob, but I'll mention, we're getting really close, really, really close, to hopefully having a commitment for expanded DART On-Call services in the city of Rowlett. That is huge, that is important. We pay a lot of money, we pay $7 million a year to DART, and we've paid $100 million to DART from inception to date. Now, the rail, the extension of the rail from Garland to Rowlett costs $250 million. I always look at Brian to validate my numbers. Between him and I, we usually get the numbers pretty close. But, you know, so we've invested $100 million, DART has invested $250 million to extend the rail from Garland to Rowlett. But, you know, DART On-Call only services a portion of our city right now, and we need it to service a wider array of our city, hopefully the entire city. And we're working with DART on that right now. Did that answer the question, Rob? Any follow-on question on DART? Lisa?
Susan Henshaw. How does the priority parking work when someone just parks there infrequently?
Thank you, Susan, for asking that question. So the first couple of months, this is what they're telling us, okay? The first couple of months, there'll be somebody stationed at the entrances to the DART, at least the first month. And they'll look at your license, and if you're a resident, a DART member resident, they'll give you a sticker. It's free. You'll put it on your windshield, and you can park in the priority area. Once they're no longer there managing that sticker process, there'll be a place in Rowlett where you can do the same thing. So you can just go up to the counter somewhere in Rowlett, we haven't figured that out yet, show them your license, they'll give you a sticker, okay? There'll be signs at the DART parking lot, because not everybody's going to hear about this, right? So if you don't have a sticker, you'll still be able to park, you're just going to be parking further away, and you'll know, hey, next time, let me go get that sticker so I can get closer in parking. Did that answer your question? Good. I hope that's how it'll work. Any other follow-up DART questions?
This is Robert Piroski. So the cars that are parked there that don't have a sticker, are they going to be towed?
So the Plano solution, that sounds really bad, doesn't it? The Plano solution?
Well, no, that's a good solution, right.
The Plano solution is warnings and tow. The Rowlett solution is going to be tickets.
Okay.
Because we don't want to go to the extreme of towing. I don't know why Plano went to the towing right away. Towing will be an option. We're actually going to be considering an ordinance next Tuesday in our city council meeting that will give us the authority to enforce the parking restrictions in the DART parking lot. So the city council hasn't even approved that yet. I anticipate the solution will be ticketing. Is that a DART question?
Yes. It's kind of a suggestion. Why don't you put a teller machine to the drive-in, too, there so that it would discourage people who do not want to actually take the DART? They would actually have to buy a ticket, so instead of going into the parking lot that's not for them to use, they would actually push them to want to go somewhere else. Because if I have to buy a ticket and I'm not actually going to be using the DART bus, I would think to go somewhere else. This is a suggestion.
Okay. What was your name, sir?
Jeremy.
Jeremy? I'm not quite sure I understand your question. Let me answer something first, but I'm not sure I'm quite on point. So the initial solution on the end-of station in Plano was to implement a paid parking lot, where DART member cities got into the parking for free, but residents that were not DART members had to pay for parking. And I can go into a lot of detail, and if you want that, that's fine, but that didn't work. That didn't work for DART, that didn't work for the third-party provider that was providing that service, and that didn't work for the city of Plano. So Plano went to this restricted, unrestricted parking solution as a second solution to their end-of-line problem. I'm not sure that's what you were asking. Are you referencing that people are parking in DART and not taking the train?
Yeah. Yes.
So how would we know that?
You have to buy a ticket to...
Oh, you have to buy a DART ticket to get into the parking lot?
Yes.
Oh. I don't know. Interesting. Okay.
As you said, I'm arguing that 35% of the people are non-DART members.
Yeah, what Jeremy's saying, Jeremy, what Jeremy's saying is 35% of the people are not DART member residents, but that doesn't mean they're not using the train. For the most part, we believe the people that are in the parking lot are using the train. It's just that 35% of them are using the train for free because their city is not paying for DART services. Now, I'm not going to tell you there aren't people using the DART parking lot and they're going downtown or they're not using the train. I just don't think that's the biggest issue. I think the majority of the 35% are just non-member city residents.
Okay.
But it's an interesting idea.
Robert Piroski again. I think the only problem you run into with that is that any time I take the DART train, I do it off my phone, so I'm not buying a ticket. I mean, I'm buying a ticket, but it's on my phone. Or when my wife used to ride the train every day, she had a pass.
Yeah.
So if people with a pass, we still have to buy a ticket to park. It's a good idea, I understand what you're saying, but it doesn't work out in the digital world today unless you had a way to scan that ticket or that pass on the machine to let you in.
And I'm sure there's a way to do that, but again...
I mean, it makes sense what you're saying, yeah, but...
I don't think that's the biggest issue, but it is interesting. And DART is absolutely moving to the digital world, so...
Yep.
We have a question in the back of the room?
Yeah, I don't mean this. Hey, just wanted to find out, I think...
You got to use your microphone, and you got to tell us your name.
Katie Brens. I guess what we're talking about is, I guess I need to clarify, is Rockwall a member city?
No.
Then residents of Rockwall drive here to the closest station, purchase a ticket. However, even though they're buying a ticket, their city is not supporting the function of the rail, is what you're getting at?
So they can't park as close?
Right.
I mean, you know, it's a minor penalty for not paying $7 million a year to support our DART rail station. I mean, but the bottom line is, the Rowlett residents are frustrated because the parking lot is full, and they're having to park far away, and they're seeing non-member city residents park up close, and they just want a little love, and I think it's a good solution. And there'll be kinks to work out. Mr. Mosley?
Jim Mosley. I had a question or comment. The rail is a great addition to our city, and hopefully, if we can get this On-Call, that will help to, because as you know, right now, our city, we've been a member city of DART for 35-something years, and we don't have but one bus line in our city. I think that part of the parking problem could be solved with adequate bus service. Now, I know we don't have the authority to tell DART to put a bus line, a fixed bus route in our city, but I hope, in addition to the On-Call, that we still continue to press DART for a fixed bus line in our city, which would make people, which would allow people, like if you had a bus route that went down Miller and one that went up the north side of Rowlett Road, and maybe one that went up and around Dalrock, people wouldn't drive to the parking lot at DART. They'd catch the bus and then get on and get a transfer slip and ride the train into work. You wouldn't have the parking problem. I just think that as a member city, we have been getting, as far as buses go, the short change, and I would like to see our city council and our mayor really push on this.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Mosley. So I asked for three things of DART, and I got three things. But they were different things that I asked for. So I asked for a paid parking lot, and I got a priority parking lot because they've already, you know, they've already figured out the paid parking lot didn't work. I asked for expanded DART On-Call service to the entire city. I hope we get it to the entire city. I am very optimistic that we will get expanded DART On-Call service. And I asked for more bus routes. The bus routes was not an item of discussion at this point in time, but we will keep it on our radar. So I told you, I asked for three things and I got three things, and one was rejected. The third thing that I think we will get is what's called, do you remember the name, Brian? It's a subsidized taxi service, and they use it in Plano and a couple other member cities, and it's working really well. But it's an ability, you know, DART On-Call has a certain area that they will service, but there's a subsidized taxi service that can go outside the service area, but it's subsidized by DART. So I'm not going to say much more about it than that, but we're hoping to be able to roll out something like that at the same time. But we will keep the pressure on the bus routes.
Yeah, this is DART. What's going to happen? Oh, Eve, Eve knows. What's going to happen when Bayside kicks in? Will DART change their mind?
Will DART change their mind about what?
About extending the bus routes or adding.
You know, I don't know. The question is, will DART change their mind about extending the bus routes when Bayside kicks in? You know, Bayside is a game changer for a lot of reasons. I can't tell you what DART's going to do. We'll keep the pressure on DART for more bus lines, but I'm very excited about the discussions we're currently having with DART and the progress we are making. So I don't know the answer to your question, though. But I do want, we will have some public hearings about all this, and we're going to ask our DART rep to come, and you need to ask that question at that time.
Okay, while I'm talking, let me keep talking. I was very excited when I became a part of it. I participated in 2020. And when we had 2020, we were really wanting our city to become a destination place. And when Bayside came through, you would have thought it was a gift for me, because I felt that, you know, Rowlett is on the map now. And when we moved here in 2009, George Bush was just, you know, being developed, whatever. And I read something where it stops, it's going to be extended to 20, 20's going to tie into it one day. And with us having Bayside, that's a good visionary project for us. So timing, you have any discussions being done for when that timing will happen?
The southern extension of George... The southern extension of George Bush?
Yes.
I don't know the answer to that. Anybody?
One thing, and Sean probably would know better, but this is something that's way, way, way down the road. And I'm sure if you've driven into Sunnyvale, you can see that they've still maintained some of that corridor coming down through there. But, guys, this is not even, and Sean, it's not even in the 2040 plan, is it? So, it's not even in the 2040 plan. But, think about this for a minute. PGBT took, was it 32 years? 42 years, excuse me. Thank you. I'm watching, I'm reading lips. 42 years before we actually got it from the time that they first started talking about it. DART was 28 years, I believe, you know, just to get the, ultimately to get the station out here. So, this is a long, long-term deal. I think it will happen. I just don't know if it's going to happen probably in my grandson's lifetime, maybe not mine.
But, you can ask us about the $350 million improvements to I-30 that are going to happen in our lifetime. So, very, very important. So, all right. Next question?
Hi. Good evening. Rick Sheffield. Since Bayside was brought up here, just in the news this week, we've seen that, I guess there's a change in developer for that. I don't know if the council or staff could talk a little bit about what impacts we see from that, or if it's too soon to talk about any of that, or, you know, any details you could give on this new developer that's in the game now.
Yes. Thank you, Rick. So, there, if you saw the press release, it was in the Lakeshore Times, it was in the Blue Ribbon, there is a new lead developer for the Bayside development. His name is Tom Del... Tom?
Delisandra.
Delisandra. He and I were pronouncing each other's name yesterday. He promised me he would never mispronounce my name again, and I didn't make that promise because I just did it right then. So, the base, you know, there's, you could see there's a lot of activity going on in the north side. So, we will be vertical on the first development on the north side within probably 45 days. The new lead developer is doing some in-depth analysis, market analysis, surveying, just to validate the plan as it currently is stated before, you know, to make sure as they move forward that we're making the right decisions from a market standpoint. So, anytime you have a, you know, a change in the lead developer of a project, that person needs to come in and feel very, very comfortable about the exact plan. So, what, you know, what Tom told me yesterday is, they may move some of the retail around to make it more accessible to the public. So, there might be some changes on the location of items, but they're very committed to the project and continue to be very committed to the project, committed to making it a destination zone, or destination place for the city of Rowlett. And they expect that in first or second quarter of 2018, that things will start moving on the south side also.
Sue Hartson. Since the tornado, believe it or not, there's still some people that are struggling because they were taken advantage of by disreputable contractors. There's one in my neighborhood that was taken to the tune of $70,000. And they have nothing but a broken-up foundation. So, as a lessons learned for the city, is there something that you, as the council, can do to better protect the citizens with respect to these disreputable contractors? And in general, were there other lessons learned from the tornado?
So, Brian, are you going to join me on this one?
Yeah.
So, contractors taken advantage of our residents and residents across the state of Texas. I'm going to get on my soapbox a little bit on this one because it's very disheartening and frustrating that the state of Texas doesn't do something from a light, in my, this is a personal opinion, I'll state it upfront, that the state of Texas and the legislature doesn't do something to regulate these guys. And there's a lot of reasons why they don't. I don't think any of them are good ones. Again, personal opinion here. So, what I'd like to say in regards to that is, pressure our legislators to do something once and for all to get these roofers and to get these builders have to register so that we can get some kind of somewhat assurances that we're dealing with reputable individuals. That has to be at the state level. And I'm telling you, our representatives will listen if they get enough input. This has been a topic at the state level for many, many decades, and no movement has been made on it. And, you know, you see events like the Garland and Rowlett tornado, and you think, well, maybe this will do it. And then you see things like the hurricanes, and you think, well, maybe this will do it. Because you know those folks are suffering the same thing right now and will over the next several years that we went through in Rowlett and our Garland residents. So, you know, that's one approach. Brian?
Yes, ma'am. I do want to tell you what Rowlett did. So, very early in the process, we started getting wind that there were people coming in from out of state, that there was no regulations, there was nothing to help protect our homeowners and businesses. So, one of the things that the city of Rowlett did is that it issued a, and I don't remember if it was an ordinance, it might have been an ordinance, but basically, the city adopted a policy that said that anybody that's going to work in the tornado zone had to have a license to begin working in the tornado zone. We were told we shouldn't do that by the state. We did it anyway. Now, what that enabled us to do is that as we inspected those properties, we were able to go and ask people to show us not only their building permit, but they had a license to work in Rowlett. Now, I will tell you, we found people still, even months afterwards, that did not. We made them stop work on the project. Some of them came in, and they would have to fill out their license and get that because we wanted to know who they were. That was the one way that we felt like we could try to help protect our residents and our businesses. But, I will tell you, there were a lot of people, for whatever reason, and we understand, you know, in the stress of the situation, you know, did not, did not have the opportunity to really vet people. Some of them still hired people from out of state, and not just out of state, in some cases, even businesses in North Texas. And they were taken advantage of. But, you know, it is a, for those that went through their insurance, those that could, because there were still some issues, I know from that, those that were able to hire reputable companies, really were able to work through those processes relatively smoothly. I think insurance was the biggest issue for a lot of folks. But, we contacted the state of Texas, the fraud department, their division. We worked on that. We issued just tons of social media posts to warn people what to look for, to make sure that they had a city of Rowlett license. Not only that, we did a forum for residents impacted by the tornado where we had stations, kind of like what we did tonight, where people can go and ask specific questions, and we had different representatives there to help them through the process. But, remember, 1,300 homes and businesses were hit, and nearly 40% of those homes, nearly totally, total damage. So, in some respects, you know, not everybody was able to do that, and there were people who were taken advantage of. It's a very sad situation. But, I do agree with Tammy that, that I think that's going to have to be resolved at the state level. I think the city of Rowlett did what it legally could do.
You know, and lessons learned, we can always do better. You know, communication in those situations is very, very difficult. But, you know, more outreach to the public, maybe next time of, you know, we said all the right words, but did we reach everybody with the right words? I think that's maybe where we could have improved. I think you can always improve on that. You know, lessons learned from the tornado, were you talking about contractors specifically, or did you want that a more broad question also? That was a compliment for those that didn't hear that.
[laughter]
I think we did pretty well, too. I really do. There's some things I would do differently, all of us would do differently. One thing that I would do immediately, and this sounds really kind of self-serving, and I don't mean it that way because it serves our residents, I would open up a bank account within an hour or two of that event happening for donations to go into that bank account so that it could go directly to our residents, because a lot of money went to national organizations that maybe did not reach our residents. So, that's one thing I would do differently immediately. Who's clapping back there?
[laughter]
All right. Next question?
Not tornado-related, but Katie Rens again. Today on social media, it was brought up about the interchange, Dalrock and I-30. The eastbound bridge going on to Dalrock, and then people coming westbound off, accident occurred today. I know I saw it somewhere, that there was some plan that TechDOT was going to redo that intersection, but I cannot remember the timeline on that project.
Okay. So, this is a huge success story that is still to happen. And, you know, when you asked the question earlier about when is George Bush going to be extended, and Brian talked about how long it was to get George Bush in here originally, and how long it was to get DART in here originally. These kind of projects have huge lead times, and, you know, it's decades for completion. The expansion of I-30, I mentioned it a few minutes ago, there'll be a $350 million expansion of I-30, and that'll be the section, just the section between Bass Pro Shop and the first exit in Rockwall. It's about, Sean, correct me whenever I misspeak here. Just keep shaking your head yes or no, or come up, start wandering up here, Sean. So, that's that section. So, what will be happening is the, we'll be adding an inside shoulder on the lanes that are currently there, the east-westbound lanes that are on 30, we'll be adding an inside shoulder. A lot of the things that happen on I-30 right now is if there's an accident, there's no inside shoulder, so they have nowhere to go, so that blocks the lane. So, they'll be building up the brim on the outside, getting rid of that scrub, moving over the lanes, and putting an inside shoulder in. In addition, there's going to be a whole new service road, eastbound and westbound, separate and apart from the current I-30 structure. Okay? So, it's a service road, it's a bridge, it's completely separate. And it's three lanes eastbound and three lanes westbound, plus walking and bicycle trails. It will be on that whole new service road, if you will, between those two areas. In addition, the whole new, the Dalrock interchange will be completely redone. So, today, you can go north and south on Dalrock, Dalrock as we currently know it, right there at I-30. In the future, you will only be able to go northbound. Keep shaking your head yes, Sean?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll be building a new bridge structure east of the current Dalrock interchange. Any other major part you want to add?
Going westbound on Dalrock is going to be a bypass. So, you'll be able to, like you're going now, turning towards Dallas, it'll be a bypass underneath the new Bayside interchange, so you can get directly on I-30.
And when's that all going to be done, Sean?
The current schedule now is to bid it in March of 2021. It's probably a 24-month, a 30-month project. We're trying to work, we're working with TechDOT to expedite that and see if we can get it moved up a year. But, it's just going to depend on the right-of-way acquisition and the utility relocation.
And was this even, I mean, when did this start become in the works? I mean, it hasn't been that long, and we made huge progress up to this time.
Yes. We've partnered with the council of governments as well as TechDOT, and they've been great partners to, they know the importance of this project. So, they've actually moved it up into 10-year plan, got the budget into the 10-year master transportation plan so that we can expedite that.
That's the significance of Bayside and the need for this. I mean, there's always been a need for this, but the Bayside really makes this very important. So, Katie, did that answer your question? Okay. Right here, Lisa. Bill?
Bayside is so promising. It's, I guess, the biggest thing that's come along for a while since George Bush. And can the city not give some regular updates, here's what's happening now, here's Bayside today, tomorrow? I don't, I don't see that, as important as that is. I think the public would like to see that.
Yeah. I mean, when there's lack of information, people fill that vacuum with information, don't they? So, I hear you. And we've been in a little bit of a lull here with the changeover of the lead developer. So, I expect that we can open up those lines of communication much more readily now. And as you see, I mean, there's dirt flying on the north end. As you start seeing dirt flying on the south end, I think we'll be able to do that more. Do you agree with that, Brian?
I do, Tammy. And one thing that I would add as well is that Bayside is going to build out, I think, not build out, on the south side in two years. It's one of the reasons why we're pushing so hard for the I-30 improvements that have to be done as well. But, from the time that they do their Phase 1, it's supposed to take about 24 to 28 months for them to build all the things that they're going to do. That's not the entire south end, that's just Phase 1. So, a lot of work is going to be put into that. I would also add that on the north side, they're already, as you see, they're already starting to build. So, when they start on the south side, it's going to appear like it's going pretty fast. Over the course of the last couple of years, they've done a lot of the earthwork, they've moved a lot of that dirt from the north-south to the south side, all of this in preparation for starting the construction.
Jim Grabenhurst, what's the website, Bayside? DiscoverBayside.com is the website. That's not a city-controlled website, that's the Bayside Development website. So, that's also something to watch. Denise, are there any online questions that you'd like to bring forward? Okay. What next, Sue's got another question.
And this is something that probably will take up in the animal advisory board, animals. But, there was a discussion on Facebook about someone who was rushing to the shelter to get her cat, trying to leave work to get the cat before the shelter closed at 5:00. And I know that it's the city that sets, because they're city employees, that sets the hours of the shelter. Is it feasible that the shelter could maybe alter their hours for like one day a week, so it's more like 10 to 6, or whatever, to allow a later time so that people who are working can get their animals before it closes?
Okay. Thank you, Sue. So, I am very familiar with that situation, and I won't go into all the specifics about it, not just from what I read on Facebook, from what I inquired about the situation. You know, when something, I'll refrain from making this a social media discussion, I think. But, when something does become apparent on Facebook, there often is things going on in the backend to figure it out. And I personally will not necessarily resolve that issue through Facebook because some of them are personnel matters that you need to deal with. So, that was my editorial comment. This specific situation, the, well, I won't even get into the specific situation. The bottom line is that our shelter regularly stays open late when they know someone's coming and they need help with a specific animal or a specific situation. Our shelter is on-call 24/7. You know, they have to have normal business hours, but all we have to do is, as residents, you know, is call and say, I'm going to be there at 5:15. Can you wait for me? This is my situation. Our shelter personnel are incredible, just, you know, do a great job for this city, and I know you know that. You're not saying anything different than that. But, they're very, very flexible. They are there for the residents, they are there for the animals, and if you'll call ahead, they will be very, very flexible with your schedule. In addition, they are open on Saturdays for that reason also. Brian, do you want to add anything?
The only thing I was going to add, that one of the things that... The only thing I was going to add, that one of the things that doesn't dictate, but it's one of the reasons why we open at the time we do in the mornings at least, is simply because we've got to clean, we've got to get it ready. We have a lot of volunteers that even help with that. So, that does take preparation and stuff. It's easier for us to be open later than it is to be open earlier because of that.
She's talking about maybe one night a week, 6:00 instead of 5:00.
I'll talk staff about that, I don't have a problem with that.
Good suggestion.
Okay. Brian, did you all hear that? Who has ownership of that? Brian will look into that. Katie, did you want to add anything on that? I can tell you're just burning to say something. And we won't get into that.
I'm not getting into it.
We're not going to get into that specific situation.
I know the shelter at one point was open, because I did talk to them about all of this. We were open three days a week till 5:30, one day a week till 6:00. 10 years ago, we had extended hours. The numbers of people that came to the shelter after 5:00 hours, from my understanding, did not warrant the expenditure to pay for staff to be there with so few people showing. But I do know nights I've called and they're like, "Oh yeah, I'm still at the shelter, I'm waiting on someone." So, there's never a problem with calling and saying, "I'm coming from Dallas, I can't be there by 5:00." They, I have never had anyone up there not just say, "Sure, we'll wait for you." But that means you have to show, because that's happened the other end too, where they just never show up.
And did we say we have a 99% success rate at our shelter?
We have probably, I mean, I can't even think of a shelter that isn't a non-city-run, it would have to be a non-city-run nonprofit that would pick and choose who they take in versus a shelter that takes in all animals within the city.
Yep.
We have virtually a no-kill shelter, one of the most incredible shelter staffs I've ever seen. Over the last 10 years, we have gotten an extremely compassionate staff, we've done more going above and beyond what most shelters would euthanize for. This shelter actually invests time and money to try to save pets that may need a little more work than other shelters are willing to work on.
And baby still needs a home, and cats are out there for a special adoption fee of $25 right now. That's my commercial. And I won't sing "Baby" to you all. Although, if it got baby adopted, I might.
Mayor, this is a semi-question.
Your name, please, sir?
Jeffrey Sheldon. This is about the parking at the Dart parking lot. Instead of, or in addition to just restrictive measures, before Dart arrived here, it was recognized by Dart that there would be people coming from the east across the lake and using the terminal station here in Rowlett. One of the solutions that they had was to put a parking lot at Dalrock and 30. The discussion, if I recall correctly, was at least 10 years ago. I don't know what happened to that, but I was thinking that there was the possibility of being able simply to relieve somewhat the congestion that takes place there, more particularly, as you pointed out, during periods when there's something like the fair that takes place downtown. Then there is definitely an overflow into the streets. But I don't know whether or not there still is a possibility for something like that, given the idea that the extension from Dart to Bayside is only on the 2040 budget plan for Dart, as I understand it. Anyway, it's just a comment with regard to an alternative possibility for the parking or trying to relieve congestion.
Can I ask a question first, Brian?
Sure.
So, Jeff, are you talking about where they'd bus Rockwall residents to our Dart station?
Yes.
I got a problem with that.
Well, that was what, that was the consideration at that time. I don't know exactly what happened to it, but it certainly did not happen.
You know, Bayside is a different thing, but go ahead.
Correct. Well, the parking could be at Bayside as opposed to simply someplace around Dalrock and 30.
The project that Jeff is mentioning was about nine, 10 years ago, something along that. Sean's nodding back there, he remembers it too. It was a cog project, and I think, I'm trying to remember, Sean, $2.5 million, I think, at one time. Those funds later got reallocated to the Martin Drive project, along with some of the downtown improvements. But let me say this, though, that project was before Bayside was even on the radar. And so, that, we talk about Bayside being a game changer, it absolutely did change the way that, that we think about that location down there. In addition to that, some of the improvements on I-30, and Sean, I'll need a nod here, some of the improvements on I-30 could affect that triangle piece, couldn't it? The ramp coming over it. So, so in part, there's two things that are going on. One is that when TechDOT does the east side of those improvements, going all the way to Rockwall, those outer lanes the mayor was talking about, there is a ramp that would end up coming back over that particular lot or that site. Secondly, it's owned by Dallas Water Utilities. It's not owned by the city of Dallas, it's not owned by the city of Rowlett, not owned by the county, it's actually owned by the Dallas Water Utilities. So, that is, that is a second thing. Third, because of the ramp, it, the ramp coming over that, it's probably not going to have the same sense of value. But I will say this, and Jeff does bring up a good point, before TechDOT, that project, that design came into play, we were having conversations even with the developer of Bayside to buy it. However, at that time, Dallas Water Utilities wanted more than the market value, and at that point, the developer backed out. But with that ramp, it is going to limit what kind of development or improvements go, may go there, and it may open up some additional, some additional thoughts that we have not had with Bayside. So, to Jeffrey's point, I think that, that there's no reason for us not to look into that further. So, thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Next question? Of course, it's on the other side of the room.
I have a question about traffic.
Your name, sir?
Larry Beckham. First of all, I want to say how great it is that you're having this town hall meeting and the format you're having. We've been going to them for years and years, and it's nice not to come in and hear a long presentation in the State of the Union or the State of the City video, and then there's no questions time. Traffic. On Highway 66, our main east and west route, the people working on the medians, for example, today, at Dalrock, I guess it's a little bit east of Dalrock, well back, about a mile and a half, they had one lane closed. Nobody was working there. I did see one guy sacking out in the back of a trailer, but there was only one lane open all the way, and it was awful hard to get past Dalrock and 66. I don't know if a better watch could be on these people to make sure that they're not blocking the traffic when they don't need to be. Another example was several months ago, there was some work being done on 66 up close to the Valero, and there was a big sign on the right side of the road going west saying, "Left lane closed." And that sign was there for at least two weeks, and the left lane was not closed. I don't know if that's the police department, Public Works, or what, but if, if we could watch out to assure that those signs need to be there when they do need, and not otherwise, it would be helpful. And lastly, traffic surveys. In about two or three months, Terolago is going to open up, and I anticipate a complete disaster there coming out on Scenic Road, especially when Cullen's Lake Point, kids are going and coming from school. We were told that the traffic survey was done, and I guess we'll, we'll have to see how it comes out. There's another apartment complex that they're doing the surveying for, it's right south of there. It's behind the nursing home at Beacon Harbor, it's right on the, right on the lake, and the only way to get to it is a little small road that goes behind that restaurant there at the corner. And, and the people, who was? Kyoto, yeah. The workers park on both sides of the, the road, the nursing home employees park there too, and to think that, you know, 70-something residents are going to get out there, you wonder what kind of a survey was done before this apartment complex was, was approved. But my question is, you know, can't we do realistic traffic surveys before these are approved? And that's just maybe my opinion, that they're not realistic, but I see an awful lot of traffic, and I wonder if it, if common sense was used. Thank you.
Okay. Did you write those all down?
Yes.
So, I'm going to say a couple things, and then I don't know if it's Sean in regards to traffic surveys, or you, Brian, or who it is, because I'm not a traffic survey expert. But I do want the public to know that in the 2015 bond, we did approve a traffic management system. And we are 90% complete on the design of that traffic management system. And what that's going to be is that we are going to be able to monitor traffic throughout the city of Rowlett from a central location electronically, and we will be able to adjust the length of various signals throughout town, as well, and monitor the volume of traffic at various intersections, as well as be able to adjust the length of those signals at certain peak times. So, there'll be variable, keep nodding, Sean, okay? So, there'll be variable signal times at various intersections, as well as in those events like where I-30 closes down and everybody decides they can go through Rowlett on 66, we can open up 66 better. So, it's been a long time coming, we're very, very close, we expect rollout in the first quarter of 2018, and that will help the situation throughout Rowlett as far as a traffic management system. You know, traffic is, is difficult, and, you know, you, I drive in some of these cities, you know, like Plano and Richardson, and I'm going, "Oh my gosh, I'm so glad we don't have this traffic that they have there." But we have our own problems also. In regards to a traffic, a traffic survey, study, I'm not going to answer that, I'm going to turn that over to someone else.
Actually, I'm going to ask Sean to do this, but every project like that has to have a traffic impact analysis, that's the TIA that you're talking about. But typically, it's not done at the zoning level, it's done at the, when the construction plans are submitted, is that right, Sean?
We try to get it at the time of zoning, a little bit after, in the site plan stage, just to make sure that the roadway network can accommodate that traffic.
Can you, can you discuss the specific TIA information at Scenic Park, excuse me, Scenic and related to Beacon Harbor? What we normally would ask for and what we would be looking for?
Yeah, I can't speak to the Beacon Harbor, I don't think it's gone through the process yet. I think it's just in the preliminary stages of being submitted, because I haven't seen it through our review process. But the Terolago, it's a substantial development, there's a traffic signal at Scenic and 66, and we will look at that. It's got two lanes in each direction, they're at the intersection, and we feel like that with the traffic signal timing and the amount, the turns that are happening that are going to occur there, that it will be able to support, the available network will support that traffic.
Well, and the point I wanted to make with this, this is science involved, so in other words, you know, this is not just concept stuff, this is, this is something that is designed, they use same standards in every city. The TIA is not something we just dreamed up and it's just a Rowlett thing. Every city uses the same technology, the same kind of analysis that's done on these projects. And if there are issues, generally speaking, the city would require, make certain requirements such term lanes, or they may have to contribute to the expansion of the road, there's other different ways that we do that as well. But that traffic impact analysis is a critical piece to allowing the project to begin with. Thank you, Sean.
Sure. And Mr. Beckham, to address your question, or your comment about the traffic with the construction, we see that also, we have construction inspectors. The, the project on TechDOT is a TechDOT project, they have their own inspectors. We have an inspector that's a liaison between those two groups, and if we see something, they're, they're limited to on the lane closures and the off-peak times between 9:00 and 4:30, 4:00. So, we try to do that, and the thing about it is, setting up the traffic control can be dangerous for the workers, so they set it all up, whether they're working or not, because they may end up getting there. So, we'll work with them to manage that a little bit better. I know exactly what you're talking about and have the same concerns, and the same thing with the, the traffic control that was for the beverage depot that you talked about by the Valero. We did actually get with the contractor after seeing that the signs were up extended amount of time over the weekend and, and worked through that. So, we've got an inspector on every one of the jobs, and we will do our best to keep that to a minimum. Thank you.
Did that kind of cover? Okay. And, and, call me, if you see a sign up there for two weeks, or one week, or two days, call me, we'll get it down. You know that. Next question? Anything on Facebook, Denise?
There was a question about the Village sign, the "A" is out, and they were wondering when it was going to be repaired.
The lighting on the "A" is out?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know. We'll write that down, and we'll get that looked at. Thank you.
We, we did see that.
Oh, he knows everything about the "A."
Sorry. Yeah, we did notice that too, and we've passed that on to the Village, so hopefully we'll get that sign fixed pretty quick. It's very noticeable from my house.
Really?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Daylon Carroll.
Dayton?
Daylon.
Daylon.
It's coming to DC, a lot easier to remember.
DC.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you. Came in a little late, so I apologize if--
We've already answered that question.
I figured so. But, you know, it seems like we've got a lot of mix, like we've got a mix of a lot of variables. So, I'm just curious how, you know, you being, you know, kind of new in the full-time mayor role, and, you know, got a few people in the council that's new, how are we managing this mix of, you know, we have traffic issues, we're wanting to diversify our tax base with maybe getting some, some more companies in that could potentially have labor during the day? Like this, there's a really interesting mix of variables here. If we're successful at getting more companies in during the day, it's going to drastically change our traffic schedules. So, yeah, we won't have the Exodus, you know, kind of in the mornings, and, you know, the mass influx in the evenings, but, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be some very interesting mix up there. And I'm curious if you guys are, I'm curious what your thoughts are, and just kind of around the room, how are you thinking about some of those things that if we are successful at doing some of the things that we'd like to do as a, as a city? How are we thinking about what we'll do to manage some of those potential changes? And have you, has there been conversation about what those changes may potentially be? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, there's a lot of facets to that question.
Yeah, that's a 10,000-foot, you know, question.
So, I'm going to answer that at the 10,000-foot level. So, first of all, I do want to say hello to Todd Catell, our former mayor, he just came in, or I don't know how long ago you came in. Am I doing okay, Todd? All right. So, you know, we got a lot of new folks up here, but we got a lot of experience too. Debbie Bobbin and myself have been on council for over four years, and, you know, we do have some new faces on council, but an incredible amount of experience from a community standpoint and from a business standpoint across the board up here. And they may be new on council, but they have been totally engaged with this city on so many levels for many, many years. So, I'm very excited about this council. So I'm very excited about this council. And they're very, they're working really, really hard and they're being very effective. And a lot of that is because of the groundwork that has been laid before us. I don't know if you know this statistic, but we got 1.5 billion dollars, billion dollars of development coming into this city in the next 10 years. That didn't happen, you know, just circumstantially. That's a plan. That's a plan being, you know, coming to fruition. That is, you know, realize Rowlett 2020, which is our strategic plan that was put in place in 2011. It is now realized Rowlett 2020 because we have met most of those objectives of that plan. So, you know, I think part of your question is, is how are we going to manage this going forward? And I'm really glad you brought that up, because there's two key things going on in the very near future for Rowlett. And one is, we will be going through a process of refining, updating, implementing a new strategic plan. The last strategic plan, the visioning plan for the city of Rowlett was implemented in 2005. And it is past time to update that. So we're in the process of vetting our final candidates for a third party to help us with that visioning plan, that strategic plan. And we will start that implementation in Q1 of 2018. The other thing that's going on is we're going to be updating our comprehensive plan. And our comprehensive plan is realize Rowlett 2020. And that's our land use plan. That's our zoning plan. That's our, our use of land plan, our comprehensive plan. And that's going to be going on concurrently with the update of our visioning plan. So that is not just your council. That is not just your city staff. That is those individuals plus all of you. You're here for a reason. You're here because you care about Rowlett. You're here because you want us to succeed. You're here because you're involved citizens. And if you're on Facebook, you're the same thing. And there's a lot more of you out there that couldn't be with us tonight. But we are going to ask for your help. We're going to ask for your participation. We're going to ask for your input. And we're going to come out of this with an updated strategic plan and an updated comprehensive plan that will get us through the next several decades. Did that, did that answer your question?
It was a 10,000-foot question.
So, Brian, did you want to add anything?
You, you picked what I would have said.
Okay.
Strategic plan. Yes, ma'am.
If he's, if he's doing this back there, let me know, okay? If you see any faces going on back there.
I noticed that we're getting a lot of restaurant retails coming into the city. And I was wondering, you know, if you've been over to the harbor lately? I think a lot of their retail space, as far as restaurants, is falling off. Are we, are we going to look at that when Bayside comes in? Is the developer going to look at that? Because if, having been over to Rowlett, the harbor, I noticed that it's about 10 restaurants have closed. And I just want to make sure that the developer knows that, is he looking at that? Why is that happening? Because I noticed they had an explosion of retail, you know, restaurant retails have opened in, in Rockwall. So is that, is that going to happen here? You know, where retailers are going to leave because they're not getting the business? So are they going to look at that? So, you know, I advise you to go over there and look at that and say, hey, you know, it might happen here.
So I just had a discussion with a new lead developer yesterday. I mentioned that earlier. And that was the main basis of that whole discussion. We talked about the harbor. We talked about Bayside. We talked about retail. We talked about sustainability. It is foremost in their mind on the Bayside development, do this retail correctly, okay? It is so, so important. You look at Rockwall and, and you look at I-30, and you've got restaurants all up and down the corridor of I-30. And they are blowing and going and they are successful. And then you look at other locations and you do have more difficulty. There is a way to do retail. There is a way to do restaurants and there is a way not to do it. And that is absolutely foremost on the mind of the Bayside team and the Bayside developer. And there's a lot of experience there. They have a lot of experience of the people that they have in place right now. And they're bringing in experts for all that advice. And they're bringing in top-notch, top-tier experts that have done these mixed-use developments over and over in the United States. And they know what is successful and they know what fails. And that's what they're looking at in more detail right now. And that's why Bayside has slowed down a little bit. It's more important that we do it right than we do it fast. And we'll have a survey someday of what your favorite restaurant is. No, we won't. Oh, don't start naming them right now.
I do have a question from Facebook.
Okay.
Do we know what's going in, in the old Sun Fresh building?
Yes.
Are you going to tell us?
There's, and I, and I said it that way for a reason. There are points in time where we have to maintain confidentiality. It's not about trying to keep things from the residents of the city. It is about, there are transactions being negotiated, there are leases being negotiated, and we cannot portray, you know, betray that confidence and cause something, you know, bad to happen. I think an announcement will be forthcoming. Jim, where are you? Soon? That's all he'll say. Soon. Boy, he didn't even stand up very long.
We had one other question on Facebook, and that was, could Rowlett get our own independent school district?
So that is a very common question. And there's lots of ways to answer that. The bottom line is the costs involved to start your own school district, to have the infrastructure, to, to buy the land, to buy the schools, to hire the individuals, to have, you know, just the, the infrastructure, the, the basics that you need is just incredible and very cost prohibitive for the city of Rowlett at this point in time. So I do not see that happening in my lifetime. But could we? Yeah. Yes, you want to add? Debbie?
I'd like to add something about the retention question about businesses in Rowlett. I thought I saw Michael Gallup's in here. There he is. He's our president of the Chamber of Commerce. And we have a group at the Chamber called the Ambassadors. And they are doing some training and they do actively pursue each company or any business that comes into Rowlett. And they keep in contact with them constantly to see if they have any questions, how they're doing, how can they help them? They help them with advertising, just activities to help retain those businesses in Rowlett. And they do a very, very good job and they try to keep up with them. So that's another avenue that we have in Rowlett is through the Chamber of Commerce to keep businesses in town.
Shop Rowlett, eat Rowlett. We have incredible options now in the city of Rowlett in many, many areas. So really, really bring in some good restaurants. So make sure you eat local. Which one?
Water. And I know about water because I went to the briefing.
You got to talk into the microphone, Sue.
I know about the water situation because I went to your briefing and it made it totally clear how bad it is for us. So are we ever going to consider becoming a voting member of the water management thing versus a customer, which gives us more negotiating power? And I know it costs a fortune to do that.
I get this one. I get this one. I'm telling Brian, I get this one. So, okay, so I don't know how long we'll talk about water, because we could talk about it for a long time. So I'll specifically address the substantive question you asked, which was, will we ever become a member city instead of a customer city? North Texas Water Municipal District has two levels of customers. One's called a member city and one's called a customer city. We are a customer city. We are the largest customer city of North Texas Water Municipal District. And we are a larger customer than many of the member cities. How many member cities, Brian?
There are 13.
There are 13 member cities. So member cities have a seat at the board. And member cities have a little bit of a discount on the pricing. Member cities have a, to become a member city now would be a huge capital investment. Cost prohibitive for the city of Rowlett. I don't even know if they, you know, let us join as a member city. Kind of irrelevant. It's not even in the decision-making process or the thought process. There, there is a little bit of a cost break if you're a member city versus if you're a customer city. But that's really not the issue. There are many, many reasons our water costs are high. One is, water costs a lot of money. And costs a lot of money around the state of Texas. And costs a lot of money for all of the North Texas Water Municipal District customers in member cities. It is the most precious commodity. It is or will be your highest utility bill. And it is the most important commodity for the state of Texas, especially in these high growth modes. What's interesting about water is that the leaders of this state are forward-thinking, making sure that we have enough water on the front end for the future growth. And they do a great job at that. And it's, it's kind of completely different than traffic. Traffic kind of follows on the back end. The development happens and then the roads get developed. Water is the exact opposite. The water district and the state of Texas is doing a great job making sure they're planning for the future, for 2040, for 2060, for 2080. That requires huge capital investment. The growth in this state is astronomical. And we got to find a way to make sure we have enough water for all the residents coming into the state of Texas. The, one of the, the downfalls of living in a bedroom community is, in certain respects, the cost can be higher than if you live in a community that has more of a mix. We're trying very hard, it was to your question earlier, DC, we're trying very hard to make sure we, you know, bring some more, more commercial and, and other things into the city to help with that mix. But we're still primarily a bedroom community. If you think about, there's communities, Richardson's a really good example. Richardson allocates about 60% of their water costs to their commercial enterprise. But they're not 60% commercial. But they allocate a large portion, they subsidize their residential customers with their commercial enterprises. And there's a lot of cities that do that. Rockwall, 40% of their commercial, their commercial base pays 40% of their water bills. Rockwall's not 40% commercial. So they subsidize some of the residential with the commercial base. The city of Rowlett, 5% of our water is paid by our commercial residents and 95% is paid by our residential, okay? So that's something we can't subsidize our residential base with our commercial base. Now, we've all, most of you have heard about take or pay. And I'm, if I start rambling, I apologize. There's so many facets of this. Take or pay is a very common, whether you're buying your water from Dallas or you're borrowing your water from North Texas Water Municipal District, those districts have a system called take or pay. So whatever your highest usage is, in the case of North Texas Water Municipal District, it's your highest annual usage. Whatever that highest annual usage is, is what you have to buy from North Texas Water Municipal District every single year. So the city of Rowlett, the highest usage was 3.2 billion gallons of water. And that was in 2011-ish?
2006.
Nine? Before the drought.
It was, yes, it was before the drought.
It was before the drought. 3.2 billion gallons of water. Anybody know how many gallons of water the city of Rowlett residents used the fiscal year it just ended? Somebody take a guess. 1.9 billion gallons of water. So over 1 billion gallons of water, we were required to buy from North Texas Water Municipal District, but we did not sell to the residents of Rowlett. So what happens when that happens? The individual per gallon price goes up because we have to charge more per gallon to offset our cost when we sell it to our residents, okay? So that's, that's a situation that we're working under as a city of Rowlett. The, you know, it's interesting, you're in a business that you're trying to sell something that you need to conserve. You know, what's the dichotomy there? How do you sell something that you want to conserve? Because of the, for the good of society, you want to conserve water. But for the good of the budget of the city of Rowlett, you need to sell water so that the per gallon price is less than what it is today. Does that make sense? So it's, it's a very difficult situation. Dallas Water Utilities is the same way. They have a take or pay system. We feel very optimistic about all this because of the growth that's in Rowlett. You know, Bayside is going to bring a lot more residential customers online and we're going to be able to allocate some of those, you know, costs to those new residents of Rowlett. So that's going to help. If you're in a city like Frisco, where their growth rate has been doing this, their conservation efforts have, you know, leveled off their purchases of water. So while their gross doing this, their water usage is doing this. When you're in a city like Rowlett, where the population has been pretty steady and you have major conservation efforts going in of all residents, your population is doing this and your consumption is doing this. So that becomes a very difficult to manage because your per unit cost gets more, is higher. I feel like I'm losing people. Am I getting too detailed? Y'all? Okay. In regards to member city versus customer city, again, it's not that critical. We are very influential with North Texas Water Municipal District, okay? And we work very closely with the member cities on trying to change the system. The one of the, the biggest problem with the system is that it requires a 100% vote by the board to change how anything is done. So when you think about, you have these member cities, and some of them are winners and some of them are losers with a take or pay system, right? We're a loser because we're buying 3.2 billion gallons of water and we're only able to use, right now, we're using 1.9 billion gallons of water. The only way that system can be changed is 100% vote by the board of the North Texas Water Municipal District. You're never going to get that board to agree to change because the winners are not going to vote yes to change the system. I'm sorry, Sue.
They said, for God's sake, use 1.9. Why are you selling us 3.2? Reset that.
So Sue said, quote, "For God's sakes." We work very diligently with North Texas Water Municipal District and the other member cities to try to influence that. And we have seen some movement potentially. Let me say something in this regard. Regardless of how North Texas Water Municipal District bills us, for the totality of the water they sell, they're still going to have to bill the same amount. Okay? It's just going to be allocated differently. It's like Robin Hood system. So yes, we don't like the take or pay system because we're one of the losers right now. And we're doing everything we can to try to influence that. But it doesn't change the fact that the cost of water is very, very high and North Texas Water Municipal District is still going to bill the totality of their customers. They're in the same cost structure that they're currently billing. Billing. Sorry. Brian, what did I miss?
Mayor, actually, that was a very solid explanation. The one thing I would add is that we have asked the district about the possibility of the customer cities having a representative on the board. Now, what we're after here is simply a voice. Because, you know, we, we are able to have discussions with the, with their staff, with their board, but having influence on the actual, to actually have a seat on the table would be much better. So Rowlett and Saxon are customer cities. There's a bunch of others. We're asking, we've been asking for them to at least let us We're asking, we've been asking for them to at least let us vote our own member on the board, even if it was just an ex officio, just somebody to have a voice on the board. And, and right now, they've had the conversations on those, but they're not getting the movement with that. Again, as, as the mayor said, they have to have 100% vote of all 13 members to make any changes. So we continue to press for that. We have others pressing for that, not just Rowlett. Even some member cities themselves are pressing for some changes on the board. But those changes are going to be very, very difficult to make as long as it takes all 13 members to vote yes.
Another angle I want to make sure we talk about is we did just revise our water rate structure. We had two-tier structure and we had a certain amount in our base rate. And we just moved to a three-tier structure and reduced our base rate. And the reason for that is we wanted to make sure the low-water users were not bearing an uneven burden of the cost. So, you know, the incremental cost of high volume did go up, but the base rate comparatively was, did go down compared to where it would have. So we are trying some things and we did increase our rates for our commercial customers and we will continue to tweak that. You can't do it everything all in the first year, but we did put some pressure on our commercial customers in our apartment complexes and they yelled loud and hard, but they were getting pretty preferential rates prior to this point in time. So we'll continue. We have a plan in place that will continue to try to ease the burden on the residential customers. But North Texas Water Municipal District anticipates that there'll be 10% price increases over the next several years. And there have been 10% price increases over the last couple of years. So it's not going to get better, it's going to get worse. I'm sorry to say that.
My name is David Smith, Madam Mayor, see the council members. I'm a little upset about that statement and all this whole thing with the water. I wasn't even going to comment about that, but it's crazy to me that we're paying for something we don't use. I just, that is just beyond me. I don't, I don't know if I'm the only one in the room that's going, why are we paying for something we don't use and why can't we change that? But I don't want to belabor that point. My question, a couple of months or a couple of years ago, there were concerns about the hinton landfill and the fumes and smell and impact on the landfill and the odor that was coming from the landfill was going to have or could possibly have on residents of, I guess that's the northeast corner of our city. Do we, are there any updates on that or are there any longitudinal studies or anything happening in terms of the air quality and the effects of the landfill on citizens in Rowlett?
Thank you very much. Brian, I don't have this expertise.
That's fine. I'll take that, Mayor. First off, let me say this, when those issues first started coming up a few years ago, we started negotiating with Garland to try to make some changes at the landfill. And they did make those changes. One of which, they have installed additional, and I can't think of the technical term for it and I apologize for that, but what it does, it helps to disperse the methane. And so that was one of the main causes of the odors coming from the landfill. The second thing they did, they made some adjustments to where their cells are. So, so in other words, not trying to be right up against Waterview residents, for example, but, but they tried to make some adjustments to that as well. They did some studies. In addition to those studies, they worked with the state. And matter of fact, we actually became really good friends with the state at the time, trying to make sure we understood the regulations that were in place. And we have our own guys with the ability to go out and test the ozone levels while, or methane levels while we're out there. So when we do get complaints, we're able to go out into the field and test that. Now, sometimes it, you know, shift of the wind for a day or two and then it improves again. You know, those are things that, you know, we're not going to be able to control. But, but I will say this, we continue to work with Garland on those issues. Every once in a while, this comes up again, then it seems to get better for a while. It really kind of depends on which side the wind's blowing, and I hate to say that. But they have made some improvements and I will tell you, they are within compliance under the, both, not only the state rules, but also the EPA rules at the federal level. So a lot of what we have done behind the scenes and worked with them to get those changes is simply from one city to another, just advocating for our customers. And, and we know that it has improved the situation.
Follow-up question. So where can we find the results of these studies? I mean, have these studies come out and said that, hey, this has a particular effect? You know, are we going to be an Aaron Brockovich story, you know, 10 years from now because, you know, this thing happened and people have, you know, kids are being born with three arms or something? I mean, you know, not to be overly satirical here, but seriously, I mean, what's the result of these studies that they're, they're doing? And quite frankly, I don't know if I'm the biggest fan of what the EPA says in terms of what's safe, right? You know, this, they could say, yeah, it's great to have X amount of microns in the air, but yeah, it causes cancer in rats. You know what I mean?
I do know this, the studies that I'm referencing were actually conducted by the city of Garland and their consultants. What they did do is share those results with us. So we can provide you that information. Obviously, I don't have that in front of me tonight and it has been several years since we've had those conversations when they made those improvements at that time. So we have access to that information and we'll be glad to share that.
I would also like just to mention that we are going to, that your city council is going to be touring the landfill within the next month. And we will continue to advocate and that's one reason we'll be touring it also. We want to make sure we continue that pressure on, to help our residents.
Hi, I'm Joyce Sroken. I live in Waterview. There seems to be a lot of information on Facebook about the rodent problem. Ted? Is, are you, is the city aware of the rats that people seem to be getting in their attics and in their yards and whatnot? I know our former mayor had some issues.
Maria? 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 You want to talk about rats? She's shaking her head no.
She's back there saying, "Oh, rats."
Maria, will you tell people who you are?
My name is Maria Martinez and I currently have the pleasure of overseeing health, which is our vector control entity. I am not personally aware of the large issue with the rats over there at Waterview specifically, but just as, in general, there's a lot of development right there right now with the Woodside Living, the homestead at Liberty Grove. I'm going to make a broad assumption and say a lot of that is coming from the moving of all that dirt and probably some of it from the landfill, kind of what we were just talking about. If there is something that you, if you or anybody listening is having a specific problem, we can come out and kind of do a courtesy inspection, see if we can find out where it's sourcing. And that'll help us target a little bit more where, where it's coming from.
And if you go on our website, on the code enforcement department, there's forms you can fill out asking for assistance. And there's three or four different free-form fields that, for different areas that you can ask for. So feel free to do that. Is that fair, Maria?
Yes, absolutely.
Did you want to add anything?
The only thing I was, I hadn't heard anything about this issue either, but Maria will have those conversations and see if we can follow up on that.
Do we have a rat expert up here? Nope. I haven't seen that, but that's a wet, look where. Okay. All right. We have hands up over here. Why don't we come up here?
Hi, my name's Carol Robin and I live on Dexum Drive, right behind Home Depot. Seems like we've been targeted with possums in our neighborhood and they're quite large. My yard man found where he, or the possum.
Can we quiet down folks so she can ask her question?
The possum dug a big hole underneath my shrubs. But every morning when I get up, I see the tracks in my flower bed where they're going around the neighborhood. Is there anything we can do? Can animal control or somebody?
So I'm going to try to answer this, Maria. Please listen. I mean, you can go and borrow a trap from animal control and if you're able to trap it, they'll take it away.
Okay.
Any other answer you want to give besides that, Maria? She's saying no. She said, "I answered that perfectly." Katie wants to answer that also. Here's our possum lady. You've got to talk in the microphone, Katie.
As, I'm your local wildlife rehabber, by the way. You can relocate your possums. However, chances are you will increase your rat problem. That is their primary food source. They eat vegetation, they will kill and eat rats, and they will kill and eat snakes. Snakes also are a high predator against rats as well as bobcats, eat rodents of all sorts. So when you start relocating these natural predators, you will increase your prey items. And if you're having your flower beds dug up, it's probably not possums doing that. Armadillos are your primary digger.
That's probably armadillos.
And they will root, but they're looking for grubs. And if you have an armadillo rooting up your yard, it means you need to let some lawn care company know you have a high grub count. And if you don't have grubs, they won't tear up your lawn. They predominantly are.
The possums are nocturnal, that was the question.
And predominantly nomadic.
And so are armadillos. And the armadillos are what's destroying the yards. So yes, take care of those. Okay, something that's not rodent-related.
It's traffic-related. It's a Waterview traffic question. The traffic that goes out to the community park, Waterview Parkway is like the main drag to get to that park. And we've talked about this and Brian actually kind of addressed this in our homeowner meeting out there. Are there any updates in terms of extending Princeton Road to go to the community park to alleviate some of that traffic on Waterview Parkway?
There are no updates since, what was that, about a month ago, that when we met up with the Waterview HOA. I will say this, though, we have renewed conversations with the city of Garland again about the possibility of connecting to Community Park from the backside of that. But at this point, you know, I don't know where that conversation is going to go. One of the things, and it's a good question, we, there were, some years ago, Sean probably remember about 10 years ago, I guess, we actually had the money and the budget to build that road back there. But the city of Garland at that time was not willing to reopen their permit with their landfill to be able to even have, to have us be able to do that. Because the road would have to be partly in their permitted area, their federal permit. And they were not willing to open that. In other words, we would have to build a road through there. We could not build it in the Rowlett city limits. It would have to come through the landfill to be able to get, on the edge, right on the edge. And because of that, Garland was unwilling to do that. Guys, that's eight, nine, 10 years ago. So we recently have had some new conversations about that to see if that is a possibility again. And at least the door is back open again so we can have the conversation. But we don't know if that's going to be their same answer once they get to that, but we would love to be able to have that second road back there.
So my wonderful city council told me I missed my opportunity. So Matt, what were you telling me?
In relation to the rat problem, remember, cats are for $25 at the animal center for adoption.
I can't believe I missed that. That's not like me. Thank you, Matt. I'm a cat lover too, so. And a dog lover, and a possum lover. I don't like rats. Okay. What else?
All right, so, DC.
Oh, sorry.
No, no problem. So I'm curious, what's our, what would you say are our strongest attributes in courting a commercial new tenants, if you will? What are we able to leverage, I guess I'll say? And then kind of, and piggybacking off of the conversation about the landfill, which I don't know if that's public or private, how are we feeling about like, you know, being maybe a little selective? Because I mean, you know, it kind of goes back to the old saying, all money isn't good money, you know? So I don't, I want to make sure we're not being too desperate and, and I don't, maybe desperate is a horrible word to use, but, you know, as we have conversations with potential tenants or people that would lease that are commercial, are we being selective or do we have any influence over who would potentially come in? So it's kind of a two-part question. What are we able to leverage as our strong suits and what's the process in terms of, you know, looking at who would be a potential commercial company that came in?
Okay, thank you. Is he on the strategic plan update? We may want to get DC involved in that process. So we have a whole area, Jim, I probably want you to come give some specifics, but we have a whole area in our north side called the North Shore. And I want Jim to explain a little bit about our North Shore marketing project we just did and how we zone that area and how we're preserving that and who we're targeting. And you could do a much better job than I could, Jim.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. Jim Grabenhurst, the Director of Economic Development for the city. And so the question was, how do we go about targeting business attraction as well as retention in the city? And so the city has a strategic plan that we piggyback off of Realized Rowlett 2020 in trying to identify our strategic objectives on who we're going to target. The mayor mentioned our North Shore District. We did a specific area plan for the North Shore District to try to identify targets that we are working with the development community and the brokerage community to try to attract to the North Shore. That is our primary job creation area. It's about 1,500 acres along PGBT and that has been designated as the job creation area for the city. And so that information is available on the city's website. The Economic Development Department puts our strategic plan information out there, And so if you're interested in looking at more of those details, that is available to the public. The other thing that we do is obviously the quality of life attributes that Rowlett has with being on Lake Ray Hubbard. Some of the exciting projects that we have, we're able to leverage that to try to get the brokerage and the development community to look at. A lot has been mentioned about Bayside this evening and clearly that is a dynamic project that is not only exciting for Rowlett, but the entire DFW region. And so those are a lot of the different tools that we'll use to go out and market to the brokerage community, to the development community, and target specific companies to try to get them interested in Rowlett. So I hope that answered that question.
Thank you very much, Jim. Did that, did that cover it, DC? What other questions? Anything on Facebook, Denise? How are we trending? I don't even know if I'm using the right words. Larry?
Larry Beckham. I understand you've got some big changes in communications with residents. Would you cover some of that and what you plan on doing next year? You know, your webpage and all?
Yeah, thank you very much, Larry. So we are going, we are in the process of updating, I'd say, facelifting our website. Is that a fair statement? So make it much more user-friendly. You know, it was state-of-the-art when it was implemented several, several years ago. Things move so quickly, it's time for our Facebook page, our website to be updated. We have lots of Facebook pages and we are very active on those. We have a main city Facebook page, it's called Rowlett Texas Government. You need to bookmark that. You need to be on that page. It's very, very informative. Denise Perrin, who is our communications director, she's in the back, she runs that page and she does a, does a great job keeping everybody informed. All, most of our departments have their own Facebook page, our police department, our fire department, Parks and Rec, hopefully I'm not misstating anything, Public Works, there's lots of them that have their own page, the library, and all that information is out there. We also have been, for probably the last two months, publishing a weekly update from our city manager. And that's on all our Facebook pages. And you can also subscribe to that. If you go to our website, you can subscribe. If you go to our website, you can subscribe to get that letter directly to your email inbox. That is a weekly update from our city manager and it is so informative and it is very detailed and it really covers all the happenings that are going on in Rowlett. My Facebook page pretty much has all the same information on it. It's Tammy Dana Boshen, Mayor, City of Rowlett Mayor. I'd like you to like that so you can stay up to date on that information. These guys are all very active on that communication. What am I missing, Brian, on the new communication rollout?
Mayor, on the newsletter in the coming up year, wanting to be more in the moment so that we're -- we have information that is current. A lot of times with newsletters, the information is static. You know, you read about it, it would happen three weeks ago or maybe there's an event coming up two or three weeks in the future. So one of the things that we want to do is to be more in the moment, meaning having information out there that's more relevant at the time that it's occurring. We're still going to promote our events and we're going to do that well in advance, but we're not going to be doing a 20, 25-page newsletter anymore. Instead, we're going to be focusing a lot more of our attention on social media so that we can make sure that we're getting information out on a constant basis and answering questions as people ask them. Thank you, Mayor.
Kind of another thing, if you just -- I don't know if I want to mention this. If you got your recent water bill, we're communicating on that also with information on what's going on around the city. That's a very good addition. I have a mayor's newsletter that goes out monthly. That's good information. We're going to have a lot of public meetings coming up with the updates of the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan, so those are things to stay tuned to. And again, there's lots of things you can subscribe to on the website and get those directly to your inbox. For example, you can get minutes from meetings, you can get agendas, you can get city council packets, you can get P&amp;Z packets, et cetera, directly to your inbox. And those are things you can do by accessing our website. And how about town hall meetings? This is the first of, I hope, many more. I think it's really important that we have this opportunity to talk one-on-one and I so appreciate you being here. And if you like this, let us know. If you see ways to improve this, let us know. But we want to make sure we're communicating. Every one of us up here is very, very active in this community and I think we're very responsive and we are working for you and we are representing you and we want to make sure we continue to do that. I'll take one more question.
Jeff Sheldon, Mayor. I'd like to end this on a positive note. There were two items that came up this evening. Mr. Johnson mentioned Main Street and the walkway and there was also a question with regard to traffic management. 2015, the council put onto a ballot for the citizens to vote on bonds that would pay for projects. Now, one of the projects was Main Street between the roundabout and 190. The other was the traffic management system that is going to go in place in 2018. So on that positive note, thank you for the council for putting onto the ballot and for the citizens voting yes for these bonds. There were a lot of other projects and there are going to be more coming.
Yes, thank you very much, Jeff. And that is -- kind of leads into a little bit of a commercial announcement. We do need to continue with these capital improvements in this city. And the city council will be considering recommendations from the Community Investment Advisory Board next Tuesday's council meeting to figure out what capital projects are the priority and how we prioritize those. You, as residents, are always welcome to attend those meetings and you're always welcome to give us our input in many different ways. So we want to make sure we're making good decisions for the city of Rowlett and we want to make sure we continue the progress we're making on infrastructure and many other areas. Been huge improvements to our Parks and Rec and our safety and some improvements to infrastructure and that will continue and it's a very big focus of ours. So I'm going to turn around, council. Does anybody want to share anything? Thank you very, very much. Reminder, before you clap, before you clap, no, you can clap away. We're all many, you know, all the city departments are represented back here. So go ask them individual questions, go say hi to them, go say thank you to them for everything they do. They're here for you also. They work very, very hard for the residents of Rowlett. Sign up for your notification system for your water usage. Please do that. We put that system in place so you can control and know how much water you're using. Get your library card updated, sign up for that. Go talk to these folks, they're here for you. Anything else you want to add?
Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.